Okay, thank you all for taking the time to come tonight. I want to welcome you to the Clayton Chamber of Commerce platforms at the podium, featuring Johnston County Board of Education candidates. The Clayton Chamber of Commerce's mission is to champion business, education, and economic development in the Clayton area. And we feel like it's very important that voters are informed on all races, but we decided that we would feature our Board of Education in a primary. So we appreciate you coming. Our Legislative and Government Affairs Committee put together the topics for each of these candidates to discuss tonight, and I really appreciate their hard work. And at this time, I'd like to ask Brad Palmer to come up. He is the Chair of our committee, and he will be the moderator for this evening. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, Dana, and welcome, everyone. The format for tonight will be pretty simple. Each candidate will have eight minutes to speak on whatever topic they would like. We did send them topics that we wanted them to address for the constituents. In the front row, we'll have signs that will let them know when they reach the four-minute mark, one minute thirty seconds, and when their time is up. And hopefully, with this format, we will be able to have time at the end for them to do some meet and greet and actually talk with them individually if you would like. The way that the candidates are chosen is we're going to choose them randomly by a number, and we're going to give them the privilege of introducing themselves and talking for that allotted time. So I appreciate you all coming, and without further ado, we'll get started. And candidate number seven, you go first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Keen Crumble, and I am Vice Bookway of the Kitchen Dr. County. It's an honor to be here before you today. My faith, my beliefs have driven me and inspired me to passionately serve my community. I have an aptitude and desire to serve and lead. I have been educated for the past seventeen years. I have a undergrad degree in computer and information systems from Monroe College. I have a counseling degree from Long Island University, and an advanced degree from Long Island University in Education Leadership. I am certified to be a counselor. I am certified to be a principal and superintendent. I have the training to do this job, the experience and the knowledge to do this job. We must move forward, open new doors, and do new and exciting things for our students here in Johnston County because we care, and we're inquisitive. We're an inquisitive county, and our curiosity for us keeps leading us down new paths. Together, it is time for us to move forward and hit, put our past progressions behind us, and start to rebuild, reshape, and restore Johnston County schools. My vision is for Johnston County schools to be identified as a high-performance school district that reflects the culture of our diverse population. My mission is to inspire and prepare every student, every day, for the 21st century by providing engaging and innovative learning experiences in and out of our walls of our schools. We must rebuild our challenging school district and efficiently support the schools that are well performing. We must rebuild our challenging school district and efficiently support the schools that did not make growth. However, in our current climate today, it is safe, orderly, and positive school environment must be our first priority in Johnston County because it does not matter how effective our teachers are. It does not matter how well our students are doing. If they are not safe and is not orderly, we as a unit can't function or remain focused. We have a bullying problem statewide, and we must create a district bullying task force to encourage reporting and respectful interactions with people from a range of social, cultural, and ideological backgrounds. Through development of positive relationships and professional development, we must adopt, implement, and utilize a systemic behavior management framework and integrate social, emotional, character development standards in all curriculums for all grades. Systematically, we need to ascertain that our schools, teachers, and students are safe and protected when it comes to emergency situations, and that there is efficient experience and empathetic school safety personnel to extinguish a crisis if it should arise. We need to rebuild our schools to regain instructional and academic excellence. We need a curriculum that is culturally acceptable and that prepares our students to be college or career ready, or prepares them vocationally. Not all students want to go to college, so we have to prepare the students who don't attend, who don't take on attending college for a trade. Everyone that leaves and graduates our school needs to be successful. We need to incorporate a technological advantage initiative in middle school to better prepare our students for high school and beyond the 21st century. We must reshape our school in Johnston County and love the playground for all students and any disproportionate appointment, and plan effectively for growing student population. We must reshape our school district and use resources effectively and efficiently. Our facilities, services must meet the needs of our grown diverse student population and communities. We must ensure that our schools are safe, well-maintained, and our technology infrastructure are stable and will support free learning as well as protect our students. In 2005, I was Vice Superintendent Dr. Ed Coon Stady. We are grown at our school per year. We must put more pressure on the state and start building new schools to support our growing population in the next three to five years. We can't keep taking tax payers' money and applying Band-Aids to our overpopulated schools. We must restore confidence in our teachers and power up in the classroom and push for salary increases to proactively recruit and retain highly qualified teachers. We must hire, develop, retain a diverse, permanent workforce, becoming the destination district, destination district, the premier district for highly qualified professionals. We must compensate, evaluate, and enhance our local supplement to ensure competitiveness and develop and maintain workforce retention practices. We need to create a teacher leadership program within the district. This could lead to increased opportunities for teachers to pursue higher education degrees for career advancement. But more importantly, we need to restore confidence in the youth. We need to restore our integrity in the youth. Within our families, we also need to excel in how we serve all stakeholders and build relationships with families, communities, and members and businesses that promote positive outcomes for our students. Today, I come and ask you for your vote. Support during early voting and on March 3rd because today, because together, on month watch, we will rebuild, reshape, and restore Johnston County schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, for our next candidate, it will be candidate number three.
All right, it's number three. I'm talking back. First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out to listen to us speak and talk about who we are. So first of all, I'm going to tell you who I am. I'm Carolyn Cash, I'm five foot three. Anyway, I want to let you know that I'm Carolyn Cash, like I said, and I'm a retired Navy veteran. I was in the Navy for twenty-four years, and I worked for the Department of Public Safety. I've been working for them for nine years. I'm a concerned parent just like you, so that is why I'm up here, that's why I run. And I'm going to answer the questions that I was given, and then I will, you know, eject them some other things. What is my experience? I'm glad you asked. I am a parent of three adult children. Yes, I have a daughter that graduated from Corin Coates High School in 2015, and the reason why we moved here is because I got station here, like I said, but I came here because of the school system. The schools were outstanding, and I still say that our schools are outstanding. I still say that, and that's why I moved here. I'm a youth director at my church, Good Hope Baptist Church at Night Day. I work with the youth ministry. I was a lead instructor when I was in the Navy at apprenticeship school. I was responsible for training new recruits on learning how to cook, how to be a better sailor, and to carry out their lives. What makes you the right candidate? Equilibrium, I just want to know. I'll let you know. My experience. I am a mother. Now, I know I don't look it, but my oldest child is, people will be thirty-five this year, and I'm a grandmother of three. So I have the experience of being a parent. I'm just like you. I have the experience of being in the military, twenty-four years. And another thing, I didn't take the people that would give it to me, the young people that would give it to me, and I tried to mold them and try to guide them and mentor them. So that was my job in that show. I mentored and produced a good sailor that could carry out. Always train your relief, so that's what I did, was train your relief. What do you see the future of Johnston County schools? I see a bright future. I see that we are a growing county. Now, if what county grows, you know we're going to grow, right? You see it now. You see all the buildings, you see all the new homes being built. So that is my concern, the growth. We got to get ahead of it. We have to meet at the bargaining tables. And whenever a developer wants to come in and build a subdivision, well, hey, say, hey, we're on the Board of Education here, what are you going to do for us? What are you going to do about people going to school? Hey, we're going to talk it out. We're going to hatch it out and see if they can help pay for the school. They don't always have to come from the taxpayer. They can give us some incentives, don't you think? Yeah. Look at County, which was a bedroom community. Look at it now, booming community, just like Johnston County. We're booming. I know you see it. We have planners and we have staff, that's own staff. Let's utilize our planners. How do you see Johnston County moving forward with school safety? Well, I'm going to let you know, I work for the Department of Juvenile Justice, and I've been there for nine years. And all the nine years, I've been on the safety committee. Now, when I was in the military, I was always on the damage control training team, and what I did is I made sure that we ran drills, and we made sure that when we run these drills that people were prepared for when there was emergency. So the same thing when it comes to the schools. You know you always have your tornado drills, you always have your fire drills, and you have your... I think they have the shooter drills. So you know, we have to make sure that we are prepared, and I also think we should also invest the money to make sure that the resource officers are trained and that we hire enough resource officers. Make sure that we have the doors and monitors that when you come to the school that you have to buzz in, and make sure that we have everything in place so that people can be safe. What are your ideas to address the problem with school construction keeping up with growth? I just said it. Make sure we review the budget. I do know how to read a budget. When I was in the military, I was in charge of, I was on the ship, and I was in charge of the food service budget, so you know that. And I know how to make sure I make a thought screen, I'll tell you that. So I'll make sure that I answer the question. I ask the questions, hey, what's going with the budget? I'll ask those questions. You can trust me to ask those questions, and I'll get those answers because I'm a results, not excuses candidate. How will you build professional relationships? I'm glad you guys asked that. Look, we got to sit down at the table. We can't have all this backbiding and everything. We got to sit down at the table. Our students, our teachers, and our community needs this, and I can sit down and talk, and talk to our commissioners, our legislators, and our board. We're going to work together. It doesn't matter how I feel about a person or how I feel about a subject, we're going to work together because there's no I and T. And if there's a mission, we're going to complete that mission. I think I answered all my questions. So I'm going to leave you with this. C is for collaboration, communication. That's me. A, accountability, and advocate for your students, your teachers, and our community. S, student success. We want to provide equity in our schools and our children. All have a right to a great educational opportunity. Honor our students. H, healing and improving our schools. We want to heal the image that we have for our Johnston County Board of Education. We want to heal that image, and I'm the person that will stay in there and help do that. So I ask you, when you vote for your early voter, vote Cash, Carolyn Cash. March 3rd also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Our next candidate is candidate eleven.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lane. I'm a graduate of St. Joseph High School. I also attended NC State University. I'm a lifelong resident of Johnston County. I love this county, and I'm proud to say that I received a great education over twelve years that I was a student with the Johnston County School System. My wife is here tonight. She and her four kids received a great education with the Johnston County School System. I'm proud to say that I have four grandchildren that are following our footsteps by attending the same schools that which we set. So you can say I have a vested interest in the Johnston County School System. I don't have a doctorate degree. I'm not an educator. I'm an average citizen, just like all of you out there. I run a commercial grounds maintenance business, which means me and my guys cut rates. I'm not a politician. I never will be. I don't want to be a representative. I don't want to be a county commissioner. I'm here for my grandchildren. I'm here for your kids. I'm here for your grandkids. I'm here for the taxpayers of Johnston County, and that's why I'm with the School Board here. In the next five years, Johnston County School System is going to be facing a lot of challenges. The growth in our county is coming fast, if it's not already here. We can't stop the growth, and we can control it. Along with growth comes kids. Along with kids, they have to go to school. So we have to have, build schools in these next five years. Because at the board meeting last night, I heard the lower skill talking about the new school that's going to be under construction over on Lynch Road, so if I'm not mistaken, what she said was that school was already projected to be at capacity when it opens, and they've only cleared the lane. That's going to be a problem. We have outdated equipment that's going to have to be updated in these next five years. Not sure if anybody knows what R-22 refrigerator is, but it's a refrigerator that's going to be outdated by 2025. We have seventy-six chillers that's in our school system that runs off R-22 refrigerator. If this refrigerator is no longer available, what will we do to run those chillers? Hopefully, they can be converted. There's a possibility that they might have to be replaced. Seventy-six chillers. They cost between $400 and $500,000 a piece, and equals thirty to forty million dollars. Where does this money come from to meet all these challenges? School fund in 2022? How about impact fees? Impact fees are two dirty words. I know developers don't like to hear that. Surrounding counties are using impact fees to help build their high schools and all the other schools. What I'm saying is, I'm not sure if we need impact fees. I'm not sure if we need a bond recommended in 2022. I'm saying the funds are going to have to come from somewhere, and I don't think the federal government, the state government, or local government will be able to fund us enough money for what we will need for these next five years. School safety is another concern of mine, and I know Ronald will talk about resource officers. He's done a good job by making sure there's more resource officers in schools in the last ten years. But we need more. We need a resource officer at every school. We need... I've got four minutes. Blame my mind. We need a resource officer at every school. Elementary schools, my understanding is they don't have resource officers. They need one. The safety is a priority. We've been lucky in this county not to have disasters like in other states, and I want to keep it that way. Therefore, I want to implement a plan where our safety procedures and our protocols are evaluated in the need of schools. I want to be sure that these schools or these plans in the schools are carried out, are carried out the way they need to be. I want to be sure they're in effect. I want to be sure that they're working. There's always change, same way with safety. We need to change yearly with the safety protocols. We need to keep up with the times. We place a tough road ahead. There's nothing that we can do that can't be accomplished. Where do we start first? First thing we need to do, in my opinion, is bring unity back to the school board. And these people are a lot my family. They hear, we've been around, they know what can't really come out of my mouth right now, but I would say unity is the key to success. Unless we're united and working for one goal, we will fail. Along with the challenges, there are also other problems that need to be solved. First, in my opinion, the school board must win by the trust of the citizens. How do we do that? One word, it's called transparency. In my opinion, every decision the school board makes, every discussion the school board has, except personnel issues, that needs to be off the table because that cannot be discussed. It needs to be in a concession. You're the taxpayer, you're paying the bills. You need to know what's going on. You deserve to know what's going on. How do we keep from having the budget issues that we're facing right now, the budget deficit? First of all, we need to identify the problem. After we identify the problem, we need to see what causes that problem. In my opinion, there's no fixing it because it's two years down the road, it's three years down the road, or backwards. But we need to learn from that problem, and we need to be sure that problem doesn't happen again. In June, or in May, when we receive the funding, we should know how much money we have. We're pretty close. We should be able to match the funds that we're going to be receiving through our budget, and it should match. If we're getting less funds than what our budget says, then we're going to have to delete something from that budget. We have to stick to the budget to make things work. There's a lot of difficult decisions that are going to have to be made. I'm not afraid to make the decisions. Everybody's not going to agree. On March 3rd, I need you to vote for me, Mark Lane, and help me to make Johnston County schools the great school system it was when I went to school, when Lane went to school. The students, the teachers, and you, the taxpayer, deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Lane. We are now at number one.
Hi, thanks to Dana, Chamber, and all the hosts for making this event possible tonight. My name's Terry Tippett. I'm a graduate of Smithville-Selma Senior High School a long time ago, later attended UNC Wilmington, went to grad school at UNC Chapel Hill. I'm asking tonight to fill one of your seats for the Board of Education with the understanding that it is one seat with many voices. Recently retired from Johnston County Schools, December 1st, 2019, entered the county school system in 2000. I was an EC teacher for those years, as well as athletic director and coach for many of those years as well. You could see I've been there, been that, and this year, this school year, and I'm prepared to improve things from the inside out. I've worked at South Campus, Riverwood Middle School, North Johnston Middle, Carin Holders, where I retired from recently, as well as stopping news charter school, where I had the opportunity to address EC delivery concerns with both the North Carolina Department of Public Destruction, as well as the Office of Civil Rights. I'm well versed in both EC policy and North Carolina High School Public Association policies, and I think these experiences, in combination with what with my experience of where I've been and what I've done, have prepared me to be one of your representatives on the board. I present proposals on my Facebook page, Terry Tippett, Johnson County Board of Education, of things that I think will improve the school system. I've also been reminded of what the role of the Board of Education is and what the role of a Board of Education member is. However, I don't say quietly, when proficiency scores and staff around continue to decline. I don't say quietly that taxpayers are left scratching their heads, wondering if their hard-earned tax dollars are being spent wildly. I don't say quietly that we continue to fail to offer adequate programs for our lower academic performing students, or those who choose not to attend college after graduation. I don't say quietly that some central service staff give huge raises for additional work, and every staff member in Johnston County Schools is asked to do additional work as well. Going on with that, the list goes on and on, but it's time to accept the fact that things are not like they used to be. The status quo doesn't work anymore. It's time to move forward and do what needs to be done to bring Johnston County Schools back to where it once was. And that's not to say that Johnston County Schools has to take a backseat to anybody because we don't. Johnston County Schools can be the model for the state of North Carolina and for the nation because with the support that we have in this county, with the personnel that we have in this county, at all of our schools, we can be the best that there is, and that's what we got to work on happening, have to happen. Our schools drive the economic growth in this county, as well as provide multiple opportunities to grow the community. It's not just about the classroom, it's about the entire community. Johnston County Schools is more than what happens in those brick-and-mortar buildings and lots of treasures too, but it's more than what happens on the school grounds. It's what Johnston County Schools provides to the communities, football games on Friday night, basketball games. That's who we are, that's what makes our county strong. Now, first, we got many challenges. First, we got to get the train back on the track of developing trust for our stakeholders and demonstrating a level of accountability, responsibility, and transparency that is expected and owed to every stakeholder in this county. We have to look at discipline, attendance, school diversity, home expectations, and the role all those things play in proficiency scores. We got, there's reasons people don't do as well as they could do, and we have to make sure there's equity across the county in terms of facilities and resources. We got to make sure that we retain our school staff and not just teachers. Every person in that school is important. We got to make sure that we retain them all. We always have vacant positions throughout the school year we never fill. We got to be able to fill those positions and keep the people we got. We always got to work on like a safety. I proposed adding additional psychologists and SROs early on. I went in SROs based on my time at North Exhale School of working there. A lot of school... A lot of school balance issues, as you see, is related to mental illness. We need to stop things before they happen. Now in this county, we got a lot of vulnerable places, you know, we, you know, of course, the mobile units that we have, but I mean, if we want to in the building, we still walk out of the building, go to a local unit. We gotta, we have to work on growth in the county. How to do that? You know, everybody says, let's do impact fees. Impact fees are nothing, we're not gonna do it. We have to have a more time-faceted approach. Impact fees is one area. Additional county money, possibly state funds, look at possible naming of school buildings and schools, naming rights for school building and schools, business and property partnerships with tax credits and tax deductions. Now all those get drawn when you say those things, and all the pros and cons for each one. But guys, we have to understand, the way we're doing it is not working. We have to find additional ways and do different things, and be willing to think outside the box to make things happen. We have to build schools and think about birth when we build schools. A lot of schools that we're building are at capacity, haven't opened within two years. Our Encino-South School is just opening 24, getting ready to open 24 new classrooms. That brings their capacity to 1,800. They have 2,100 enrolled, you do the math. Now, the Board of Education has to find ways to improve their transparency. And we do have to get input from stakeholders. One of the best ways is to simply be available to end the communities across the county with town hall type meetings to listen to concerns, and be willing to listen to people, be willing to hear what they have to offer. The people in this county, taxpayers of this county shouldn't get their news about their school system from a local media outlet. You should hear it directly from the people who are representing you on the Board of Education. We have to be willing to do that. My personal commitment is that I will be in the schools, I will be in every school in this county, at least every other month. It'll be like a full-time job for me. I need something to do. But my wife doesn't want me to say that, but she said, I feel funny to do that anyway. I need something to do. But that's one way that we, that's one way that we get, because people in these, people in our schools have ideas to improve the educational system, if we listen. We have to put the, and you guys that are in the community, y'all are stakeholders, everybody has ideas and things to improve the system, but we have to be willing to listen, to get out there and listen. And as far as, I said that Johnston County Schools drives the economic growth. I made proposals that we look at, something that AR students are not gonna go to college. And I want to use the state graduation requirement of 22 credits. We have about 20 for 32 credits at high school. Take those teen credits, I will offer career classes, no grades involved. Career classes for those students. What they do is checklist, partnership with communities, so I have 30 seconds of it. It's a partnership with the community, we work with them, it's a checklist. Example, electrician, that checklist is gonna be everything that kid's working on toward being able to be licensed, a licensed electrician someday. Talk to me more about this, I won't talk more about that, you got time for that. But that's what we have to do. We gotta be willing to think out of the box and understand that we got the best personnel that anybody can possibly have. I got a red stop sign. We have the best personnel anybody can possibly have. Just go to the Facebook page.
Thank you, sir. We are now the candidate.
Hi, thanks for coming out tonight. Good to see everybody. I don't know how to use a microphone, but I'm running. My name is Michelle Antoine. I'm not gonna be able to get to everything I want to talk to you about tonight, so if you could go to michelleantoine.org, or my Facebook page, at Michelle Antoine for Johnston County Board of Education, you can find more information there about me and see if what I have to offer is something that you are interested in voting for. So we could give us some talking points tonight, and I'm gonna go through those with you. So first is what my experience is. So I've been married to my husband for 20 years. We moved to Clayton area about three years ago. We have eight children, which is where the experience comes in, and yes, we know how that happens. I don't mean yours, it's not very helpful. Before we moved here, I grew up in a rural community outside of Madison, Wisconsin. It was an agricultural community, not that much different than Johnston County. So this feels very familiar and very much like home to me. We, I have a Bachelor's in Arts and a Bachelor's in Science from the University of Wisconsin. I was licensed K-12 to teach in both Wisconsin and California. We moved to Los Angeles area, we spent 10 years. And I did my graduate work. When I completed that, I went on and did psychometric testing with adults with disabilities. So I have an MS as well. When our families started to grow, I decided that I needed to be at home with them. And so I decided that I wanted to stay involved in my community, so I joined my homeowners' association board. And I've been on the board of every homeowners association that we've lived in, which is four over the last 20 years. And the first one that I was involved in, I was the treasurer, and we collected over a quarter million dollars of dues every year, and I had over a million dollars in the reserve fund that I was also responsible for. So it made me very well versed in budgeting, and how to take care of budgets, and how to deal with complaints from people. That makes me pretty well qualified. The future of Johnston County Schools is bright. I believe it is bright. I believe if we set our sights on the right things, we're gonna do very well. And that's gonna require a change up on the Board of Education. You're all here because you're concerned, just like me. I had no interest in being on the Board of Education. I'm busy, you're busy. But when I started seeing things come home from my children's school that didn't match up to their grade level, I was concerned. And so I went to the principal and I said, why isn't this? And he said, what's going on here? And he said, we do not have curriculum for our social studies and our science. And so I went to the accountability office, and I said, why don't we have a curriculum for our science and our social studies across the board for our children? And she said, we do not have the funding. And I said, that just will not do. So I started looking at possible solutions. So I started looking at impact use fees and why we are not using them. We have two large developers in our area, and they like to build large tracts of homes. And those homes are artificially deflated in price, because it doesn't actually add into the cost of the home what the impact is on our community through roads and schools. And so we need to put in the impact use fees, which other towns have been able to do, and we need to get with our legislatures and make that happen for us as well. We have also, I also decided to get on the board when I saw the budget shortfall, and I saw that we had $10 million that apparently went missing, but it hasn't gone missing at all. When I look back four years into the government numbers, you could see that we were underfunding our schools, and not just by a little bit. So we were in 2016 underfunding our schools by a hundred and five dollars per student, which over 36,000 students equaled $3.8 million. So when our school board put in for their funding allotment to the commissioners this year, it went in at $84 million, and the commissioners allotted them $63.5 million. So where all that money went missing is in that gap. So we need to start funding our schools appropriately. And we can do that if we have people on the board who wanna look at the budget, who wanna pursue impact fees, and who also want to work in partnership with the corporations we have here in Clayton. Noble Nordus moved here, and they spent a billion with a B dollars building a plant. And they want to use our resources and our infrastructure to do that. And they also, I'm sure, want to use the children coming out of the schools as future employees. So we need to give them kids that know how to perform. And when our schools used to be in the top 20% of the state, and now are in the bottom 20% of the state, that's not going to happen. So we need to get a curriculum in place that covers all subject areas, and helps all the kids be proficient learners when they come out. I have a lot of points that I want to make. I think we have great teachers here, but I think we need to work with our teachers, figure out who can be mentor teachers, and pave an important way to keep them in Johnston County. We need to be coordinating with the Board of Commissioners, looking forward to gather a massive increase in costs. We heard about the Board of Education, it was me and last night, when we were talking about this face-to-face school that's planning to go up, and we don't know how they're gonna pay for that. So we need to be working with the commissioners closely. And we also need to be looking at our children with special needs in our county, and we need to be funding appropriately for their education. You know, it's been a hard decision to make, the choice to run for Board of Education, but I can't wait till I retire to help my kids. And I hope that they give me a shot, and they'll take a look at me and vote for me. Michelle Antoine.
Our next candidate will be number four.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Clayton Chamber, and I appreciate you, parents and taxpayers, being here to hear us. I'm Kay Carroll, and I'm a pharmacist by profession. I married my high school sweetheart, who happens to be here tonight, and we both established Carroll Pharmacy in 1977 in Smithville. As I look across the stage here, you can see that I'm the guy here. I'm the guy that has served on this Board of Education previously for 16 years, and certainly on other committees. We talked about how do we fund schools, I'm gonna talk about that here. You know, we've talked about impact fees. School boards cannot impose any kind of fees. We cannot borrow money, we cannot tax. So we have to deal with county commissioners, state legislators. So in cooperation with them, trying to fit our growth into a bond issue, and then once that is set, then you have to go back and decide what you can do, what you can't do. I had the privilege years ago, I say years ago, working on a committee, it was a statewide committee for facilities. And we crossed the state of North Carolina, looking at counties that were having the same problem we had, that growth was so big, they were unable to deal with the building problem. The state of North Carolina decided, this committee put out a report, and we decided that we should have a billion-dollar statewide bond issue. It may be time that we revisit something like that, but the state comes up and says, we realize we're growing, that they need to do their part. And so that may be a conversation we should have with our legislative delegation, to see if we can't pursue that kind of issue. In Johnston County, unfortunately, we're gonna have to live with building schools through bond issues. That's the fact of life. So those things, you know, are basically out of our hands in terms of what the school board can and can't do. So we have to live with that, and I think taxpayers need to understand, you're fighting a big battle when we talk about impact fees. I don't say let's don't talk about them, let's don't, you know, see if we can't help them, but that's entirely out of our purview, we can't do it. So let me talk to you about my experience. In the time that I served on the Johnston County Board of Education, it did span 16 years. But the boards that I served on were fortunate, I served with many, many, many good board members. And we all share, along with the administration, with parents, with communities, the same vision. We wanted our school system to be the best school system in this state. We wanted our students to be the best prepared students in the state, that when they finish high school, they could go to the college of their choice. When they finished high school, they could pursue the career of their choice. That when employers talk to them, they could tell immediately that these children, that these students had the ability to think, to solve problems, they were motivated, they could work with other people. They were students, they were employees that an employer could take and train and educate to do whatever job it was that they wanted to do. That's what education's about. That's what a college degree is about. I went to school, I learned all about pharmacy. Well, I learned how to do pharmacy when I went to work in a drugstore. That's what education provides us. I, my wife and I graduated from public schools in Johnston County. I went to, we went to Smithville High School. Our three children graduated from public schools in Johnston County, triple X. We have seven grandchildren, three of whom attend school in Johnston County, Smithville-Selma, Smithville-Middle, and South Smithville Elementary. So you heard reference that we were, used to be in the top 20% of schools in this state. How did we do that? It was that shared vision of knowing and wanting to be the best that we could be, parents, everybody. We were very purposeful about involving the entire community, teachers, principals, administration, the board, community leaders, in developing a plan, developing a roadmap, developing checkpoints. Every year, we came together and we put that together. Where do we need to improve ourselves? Where are we doing well? Who's doing the best job? Look at what they're doing, let's see if we can't do it in the schools that are not doing those things. So that is how we begin to develop trust, that's how we begin to develop respect, confidence, that's how we show teachers in the classroom, that they have the support that they so desperately want and need, so when they walk into a classroom, all they are concerned about is teaching children. That's what we have, and I can tell you, that's what we can have again in this county if we work together. And if I'm elected to be on this Board of Education, I can work with anybody, any person, anywhere, so long as we're committed to the same goal. And that doesn't mean we have to agree on how to get there, we never did, we always fussed about it. But we have the same goal, being the best, graduating with kids that were very smart, very educated, very capable. So vote for me, Kay Carroll, and if I'm elected, I will work every day to make this system the best it can be, and that we will educate your children to a maximum capacity with your help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You now have candidate two.
Good evening, y'all. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know you're all busy and you got a lot of stuff to do. I appreciate the fact that we're trying to become informed voters. My name is Rick Mercer. I can remember back in the day when I'd be out in the audience with a notepad, maybe a camera, and my friends would be up here on the stage at the dais at the town hall. Tonight, it's reversed, right? So life takes a funny turn sometimes. I'm here because I'm, like so many of you, I'm concerned here, and I'm dismayed by the direction of our school system. And I think I'm the right candidate, one of the right candidates for this board, for three reasons that I want to highlight before you all start checking your Instagram or texting or anything else. First thing, I know how good government works. I see it every day, I do it for a living. I'm proud to work with the folks at Towne-Garner, I think they do it right. I think I can help bring that leadership to Johnston County Public Schools. Second, I've been committed to my core, the open, transparent government. I dedicated my life to that as a journalist, and now as a government official. I serve on the board of directors of the North Carolina Open Government Coalition. If I don't bring open, transparent government to Johnston County School Board, those folks are gonna hold my feet to the fire. That's accountability I don't think anyone else can claim. And third, like I said, this is the most important thing, I'm a parent, like so many of you out there, who's concerned about the direction of our kids' school system, who's concerned about the resources, or lack of resources that are being devoted to our kids' schools. And I think like so many of you, I feel like, over the years, we haven't had the And I think like so many of you, I feel like, over the years, we haven't had the adequate, effective representation on the school board within the system that parents and our children really need. So, I said that Mr. Grantis and I used to be in reverse roles. My wife Lauren and I moved here thirteen years ago so that I could become the editor of Clayton U-Star, and given Mr. Grantis a hard time. I've built relationships with government leaders, with business leaders, with folks doing great things out in the nonprofit world, out in our community, and others, including some educators. And I've continued to draw on those relationships, and more recently in particular, after I decided to follow to run, you know, I've met with some county commissioners, I've met with some of the current school board members, I've met with other people in the community, including teachers, lots of parents as well. And I want to highlight that to note that, you know, my approach is always to listen and to learn, listen and learn, revise your ideas, be humble, understand you don't know everything, understand the complexity of issues. I think my journalism background has taught me that, and I think my service in local government has as well. So I'm going to use that approach to keep building relationships and trust in my knowledge bases, I served you on the school board, and it'll enable me to be that well-informed parent who represents you. So for the past nine years, I've been the community, well, first Public Information Officer, now Communications Manager for the Towne and Garner. I've been in the room with our mayor and council members, the town managers, as we've made tough decisions, I've been involved in some of those decisions, including budgets. And I know how good government's supposed to work, and you know, even today, I continue to increase my knowledge about best practices for local government. Today, I was attending the Municipal and County Administration Course at the UNC School of Government, I'll be getting a certificate in that in a couple of months. And I think I want you to know that, right away, I want our new school board to have a joint retreat with county commissioners, it's been a couple of days, we're going to talk about long-term funding needs, we're going to come out of that with a course for the coming fiscal year's budget, for five-year budget model for operations, and we're going to come out of it with a capital budget plan, one that will include a substantial bond referendum, not, not the little one they had a few years ago, which was insufficient and didn't begin to catch us up. You know, back in two thousand seventeen, the school system and county commissioners knew that we would need four new schools by two thousand twenty-five, and they said back then, in two thousand seventeen, that an elementary school and a high school where the immediate needs, none of those schools have been built, none of those schools. Today, I am, we're about six schools behind, or will be in a few years. So we're terrific, we don't have a plan, we don't have a plan about building schools, we're exciting them. We're going to do that, we're going to, we're going to have a planning retreat, we're going to develop new relationships with our county commissioners, a new school board, to earn their trust, their credibility, and we're going to have a clear direction on operational budgets and our capital budgets, and we're going to start building those schools and citing them in locations where we won't be over capacity on day one, and where we could have a decent and fair, equitable socioeconomic distribution of our student population. There's another thing I'm going to take up with the county commissioners right away, and that's Arizona regulations. You know, if you look at the comprehensive plan the county has, they recommend looking into adequate facilities ordinances. I think we should look at, I think the commissioners, the school board can't do it, but I think we should advocate for the commissioners to develop an ordinance that would enable them to, when necessary, and I think we know that's often necessary with some of these new subdivisions, when necessary, to delay approval of those subdivisions until a time when we have adequate school facilities to meet the needs of those new subdivisions. County government has that power, at least according to the folks I spoke into at school government. Our county government needs to step up and do that. Also, I think commissioners and the school board need to speak with one voice through our state legislative delegation and tell them that the state government needs to adequately fund new school construction, with a state school bond, a school construction bond, and they need to step up their support for annual instructional costs. You know, twenty-five years ago, there was a court ruling saying that the state was not fulfilling its constitution, state constitutional duty to provide adequate funding to ensure quality education for all students in this state. They've been failing, they still haven't kept up with the funding, they're way behind, they need to step up their funding, and we need to speak as one voice and make the state government fund us at more adequate levels, because that's a big chunk of our school system's budget right there. I need to jump around, you know, I know that we need to keep building a school system that adequately prepares our students for the pharmaceutical jobs that are coming here, I know we need to prepare students of career and technical education paths. I think the new step halfway is great, I do want to say that, that I hope that program will, will have a good gender balance and a racial and ethnic balance that reflects this county as a whole, because if it's not doing that, then it's not building the workforce of tomorrow. And I know I got to go, I have a lot more to say, let's talk later. My name's Rick Mercer, I'm the very last name on that ballot, so flip it over, look for me, it's a one-pager, there at the end, and I hope I can earn your support. Thank you.
Our next candidate will be number five.
All right, are y'all hanging in there? I know people on, do you need to stretch? Really, I do, stretch a second, go ahead, it's all right. Chuck Williams is my name, I'm delighted to be here tonight. This has to be a Guinness Book of World Records, that sixteen people filed for the school board in one county, but it excites me because it means there's passion amongst our citizens for what's happening in the schools. So join me in giving a round of applause just for being here. I want to tell you a little bit about myself first. I'm a family physician, I work with Horizon Family Medicine here in Clayton, I've been here since two thousand. We see newborns, we see adults, we see children, we see Medicare, we see Medicaid, we see uninsured, we see insured, every type of citizen in our county walks through our door, and I have a great appreciation for their health needs, their education needs, and their family needs. And that's an experience that can't be duplicated, I encounter every type of citizen we have. I also served as a teacher, I teach medical students for UNC's Medical School, they rotate through our practice, it is the most enjoyable thing that I do with my day in addition to seeing patients, and I have a great respect for teachers that earn trust with our children every day here in our school system. Married to my wife Robyn, she's here, she's a teacher, so I've leaned on her a lot for policy ideas, she taught in Raleigh and Winston-Salem and Elementary School. I have three boys, they're tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, one of them is here, Wyatt. The other two said, Dad, I think I need to just get home and wash my socks tonight. Wyatt, you got to raise your allowance, see me afterward, thank you for coming, son, appreciate it. These guys have been here, Palatine Elementary, Riverwood Middle, Clayton High School, we run the gambling, and we've had some incredible experiences with teachers, with administrators, with coaches, and with parent volunteers, and that's one of the reasons I ran. My father came from a really humble background, I'm an native North Carolinian, he grew up in rural North Carolina, and education changed the trajectory of his life. From a humble background, he became a successful businessperson, and in the latter part of his life, I watched him just pour energy into educational charities. And I began to realize, wow, this is what drove him, this is what made him the person he was, and this is a, this is a solemn responsibility as a citizen to give back. So when my boys hit high school, I thought, okay, I have a little more time now, I don't have to taxi them everywhere, I don't have to coach all their sports anymore, perfect year to do it, and then fifteen other people also decided to do it with me, so maybe my timing wasn't so good. But again, I just feel a real obligation to return public service to a system that has served my family beautifully. We've been blessed by the schools and by the teachers here. So it's an honor to run, it's an honor to be here tonight talking to you all. I think the future is amazing, I think the future is amazing despite the difficult year that we've had, and the future is amazing, but we have some talented families and talented people moving to our county. We're over two hundred thousand people now, to the tune of over four thousand people in a year, and these are, these are folks that are coming to do pharmaceutical jobs, high-tech jobs, and they're going to demand great schools, and guess what? We're going to give it to them, right? We're going to give it to them. They have expectations of excellence, and we will meet it, we will meet it. And we'll meet it because we can do it, we already have best teachers in the state, we already have very capable administrators, they need to be proud of the funding and the direction to make it happen. I've used the HEAL acronym, I'm a doctor, so I like to talk about healing, so I can give you one of these cards afterward, this is on my website, I'd like to just walk through these, these four steps of my platform. H stands for honesty and integrity, honesty and integrity. Honesty and integrity, they're so important in public service, maybe more so even than the private sector, because the taxpayers and the citizens depend on their elected officials to show honesty and integrity. Honesty and integrity is also super important in my job as a physician, and every day, my patients have to trust what I tell them, they have to trust the advice I'm giving them, they have to believe that I'm leveling with them when I'm giving them a diagnosis. That experience will carry over to the board. I would argue that the bulk of our problems over this last year, it just simply stems from a lack of trust. If you have to summarize all the difficulties that we've had, it's really a lack of trust, it's a lack of trust between board members, it's a lack of trust between the citizens of the board, it's a lack of trust between the commissioners and the board. We just have to have good people that are trustworthy and honest and have integrity, we can fix anything. We all have the same goal, we all want excellent schools for our children, and if you have the right people in the seats on the board, that can happen. So honor and integrity are very important. Number two, E, we have to equip our teachers to succeed. Do you know what the number one metric for the success of the school is? What would you guess? Teachers. You know what number two is? Teachers. Guess what number three is? Teachers. Okay, teachers make great schools, study after study after study after study, they have to be the priority when we shape policy, when we spend money. How do we get them here? Well, we're competing with Wayne County, they have bigger coffers than we do, we have to acknowledge that, but we squeeze every dollar out of a budget we can supplement their pay, that's number one. Number two, how many of you have had a teacher say, I've got to go to another terrible, boring workshop tomorrow instead of teaching my class? Have you ever heard that? Every teacher I've talked to says that. Why don't we settle for that? Can we not do better? Let's have some meaningful professional development, let's have teachers say, I want to be working Joko, they have some really cool professional development, I get to work with peers on best practices, they're really passionate about curriculum. That's an extra, okay, that's not money we necessarily give them, but that's, that's a feather in our cap that we could offer. So teachers want to come here, they want to come to Joko, it's a great place to be, it's a great place to teach. We also have an insurance safe working environment, several people touched on this already, we're making strides here, we've done much better with the entrances and exits to our schools. Some of our schools like Clayton have about five hundred and ten doors, I think. When was this school built, in like nineteen-ten? I mean, it's, it's very difficult to get schools like that safe, so some are going to require more work than others, but just a simple measure, interesting infrastructure, we're already funding and already working on, we're stepping in the right direction. And look, there's commissions across the state and the country working on school safety, we can learn from best practices, we have to stay one step ahead of those who want to do harm for our schools, and we'll do it, we can do it. A stands for accountability, accountability is so important when it comes to your money, and economic stewardship is probably the thing that the county looks to for the board above anything else, they just want to know their money is being well-spent. I'm an owner of my practice, I'm a private business owner, every month, we review our financials. If I see one trend going the wrong way, if we stop immediately and review it, at the end of the year, I don't say, wait a minute, why are we this far in the hole all of a sudden? And I think that's what's maybe upset the citizens, the citizenry, is where did this come from? Why am I being surprised by this all of a sudden? So maybe it's a failure of communication of where we have been and where we're going, that has got to be better. People deserve to know where their money's going, where we are in the process, how much of the debt that we face, and what our plans are to fix it. And I echo several of the fellow candidates that are equally serious about making sure that happens in the next election cycle. The L stands for we need to level the playing field for all students. I'll admit upfront, my kids have had great experiences, but up in Palatine, Riverwood, Clayton, I would argue, three of the best schools in the county. Not every student has the same family dynamic, socioeconomic opportunity, teacher base, community support that my kids have had, but I want every student to have it, I want every student to have the same experience my kids have had. And so we have to look at student equity, we want every student, when they walk through the door, regardless of where they're starting from, to have the same shock that my three boys have had. And there's a lot of policy on my website that'll talk about student equity and how we can get there and how we can make that happen, but I'd say above anything else, that's what matters the most to me. I attended a Business for Breakfast meeting this week at JCC, and we have some amazing programs in place already for our students to participate in local industry, to train for these jobs that need training, we just need to publicize some more, we need to communicate more to parents who are available. We're at a crossroads, and I never thought a Board of Education election could be this important, it's really important. I need your vote, vote Chuck Williams for school board, thank you.
We're now to candidate number eight.
Down for the short person. My name is Teresa Grant, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I was the first in my family to go to college, so I understand the doors that can be opened with a good education. Future's bright in Johnston County, we have exceptional compassionate, loving, kind teachers that do a great job. We're working really hard to meet the social and emotional, and even just some of those basic needs for students. We applied for a grant for a USDA program for some of the low-well communities, free lunch, free breakfast for all students in the school, four of our schools were accepted in that. We did share tables for twelve of our schools for food that would have been tossed in the trash, some of that is put aside on the table so some of those students can take that home with them and not go home hungry, just trying to meet some basic needs so that they can focus on their education. Some parents brought that up to me and said, can we do this? And we were able to move forward with it. Last night, we voted to partner with two mental health providers to put mental health in four of our schools, and then hopefully next year for more, again, trying to meet those basic needs so they can focus on their education. This year, we're able to put a reading curriculum in the schools. Right now, they're working on a rubric for a math curriculum to decide which way to go with that, and then hopefully we can follow up with a science curriculum. All that to try and have equity in education across the county and help improve those grades and give those children a chance. We have Avid and IB feeder patterns now, elementary to high school, we haven't seen the results of that yet, but those teachers and principals that presented to us saying they researched it, this is the direction they want to go, as passionate as those presentations were, I think good things are going to come out of that. We have robust school improvement plans for those low-performing schools, we'll evaluate that, see what's working and what's not, so we can make changes around the county, take the good things that are working, put that somewhere else and try and make a difference. Two of our biggest challenges are growth and budget. We've grown a school a year for about the past ten years, in students, not school buildings, that's what we need, and we work with ORED and our county commissioners to project the student growth, where that growth is going to happen, so we can determine where's the best place to build a school. Our county commissioners are starting to work on a capital improvement plan, including schools and land banking. That's very exciting, because one of the things that we saw when we were looking at land for the elementary school is, is getting harder and harder to find. Those big parcels of land, they're suitable, suitable for a school site. The other thing is, that land is increasing in value, and if we don't start banking it now, then that land price is going to go up, and so what cost us now thirty-five million to build an elementary school and up to sixty-five million for a high school is going to cost even more if we don't, don't start banking that. Commissioners are trying to think outside the box for other ways of funding besides bonds, but that is routinely how we get the, the new schools' budgets. We have been underfunded in budgets since the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. If you go back and look at what the school has received and what they've spent, typically underfunded by two-plus million every year. What happens when that happens? Money comes out of the fund now, so we go back to the county commissioners and ask them more. Years ago, they used a funding formula to help decide what funding to give the schools, I'm not sure why that went away, but I am excited that they are at least starting to think about a funding model again. That would help tremendously if they could use a formula to project how much they want to give the school system. Safety, security, we have done so many upgrades over the last two years, we're finishing up the security vestibules next month, we partner with law enforcement, doing active shooter drills in the schools, partner with them for, with our SRO officers, we now have them in all of our middle schools and high schools, and hopefully we can move forward with those in elementary school at some point. There are a lot of other things, safety and security, that go on behind the scenes that we can't share, because then everybody would know, and we don't want everybody to know, but lots of things happen trying to make sure that our students are safe. Bullying and harassment is another thing with safety and security, it's not just these outsiders or whatever, but what can we do to make sure that bullying and harassment stops? Our legislative committee did a great job working on Our policy committee did a great job working on those policies this time, I think they did really good, came back with some things that I think will protect those victims in those situations. I had a parent come to me, not long after I got on the school board and said, "Tracy, I can't figure out how you report bullying." I went on the website, and sure enough, I had to drill down deeply into the website to find it, and I said, "Why can't we just put this on the front of the, of the webpage, make it easy to find"? They went back and did that, now we have a tip line on there, you can report that or other things, but it needs to be easy, people need to be able to alert us to those things when it's going on. I've been building relationships with stakeholders for years in this county, I've worked with our county commissioners and legislators for over 10 years. Many of them, I worked hard to get them elected, well before I decided to run for office. Working, since I got elected, working with our town mayors, our town councilmen, our chamber members, those wonderful business partners that do so much for our students. We have mentoring programs, we have apprenticeships, internships, job shadowing programs with business, businesses like Cisco, Griffles, Caterpillar, Norah Notice, they are investing in our students, and we appreciate that so much. I am out in the, about in the community, generally try to be two or three places a week so that I can meet those business partners, meet the students, meet the teachers, meet the parents, so that they can have my ear if they need that, let, let me know what's going on. We also work with the town of Smithfield, Selma, Benson, and Clayton for a line workers program, apprenticeship program for students. We want our students to be job-ready, life-ready when they graduate, if they don't wanna go to college. We also have schools that have carpentry, fire academy, welding, automotive services, vet assistance. There are things out there for these students to be passionate about if they don't wanna go to college. But we have great programs for colleges as well, finish high school with a two-year college degree, Joko Teach, grow our own teachers, lots of great things happening in this county. It's been overshadowed by a lot of negative news, but don't sell the school system short, they're doing a great job. One of our biggest challenges right now is looking for a superintendent. We've asked for stakeholder input, community, staff, but one of the things that I think is key is a superintendent that has a track record for improving grades. We asked for stakeholder input for a lot of things that we didn't, because we do wanna know what the community wants. I am seeking reelection for one final term, this has been one of the most rewarding things that I've ever done in my life, I'd like to do it one more time, I'd appreciate your vote, and then I'm gonna retire and just spend the rest of my time on the grant, and thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for all's patience and attention, we're down to our final two candidates, and the next candidate is candidate number 10.
Thank you everyone, my name is Ronald Johnson, and I'm seeking reelection to the Johnston County Board of Education. I am a Triple S graduate, as many people on stage are graduate of Triple S, but I graduated in 2001, which makes me 36 years old, and I'm a little confused, because I heard one of the candidates say she had a son that's 36 years old, and I'm trying to figure out how I look older than she does, but being on the Board of Education can put some years and miles on you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and service has been a huge part of my life ever since I turned 17 years old. I grew up in Smithfield, and we're hearing a lot about equity and the disparity that some of our communities face. When I was 17 years old, I became a big brother or a mentor to underprivileged children while I was a junior in high school. I would do things like take them bowling, provide them guidance on issues they may be facing, and I've stayed in touch with them to this day. I went off to college, came back to my community, and became a police officer. I've been a police officer for 15 years. I'm currently a major crimes detective with the Smithfield Police Department. The reason why I ran for school board is I spent time as a school resource officer. My chief of police came to me in 2007 and said, "Ronald, I want you to go and be a school resource officer at Smithfield area schools, because we have a gang problem, we have a drug problem, and we need you over there." I said, "Chief, I'm really not interested." He said, "I wasn't asking, son, you'll be out there Monday." I went out there, and those children saved my life. They changed who I was. When I was a police officer, you were typically focused on making an arrest, going to trial, and being dealt with a situation. But you can't do that so many times before you say, "Wait a minute, this process isn't working." I started after-school activities for these kids that had nowhere to go. We stayed in that school until they kicked us out playing basketball, ordering food, playing Xbox, football, doing things to keep them out of trouble. It was a great thing, we changed the culture of that school. The teachers came to me and said, "Their conduct is marvelous, however, their grades are still tanking. Can you tell them that they can't go to your after-school activities if they don't do their work"? And keep in mind, these are, these are gang leaders, these are wannabe gang leaders. I said, "No, but we'll work out a trade, you get them for an hour, I give them for two." We developed an after-school tutoring program for these students, and we changed the culture of that school, and I don't think anybody up here would contend that. My goal was to be a police officer for five years, had a good time doing it while I was earning my master's degree in business administration, but I stayed because of those children. Once I earned my master's degree in business, I became a, I became an adjunct business professor at Johnston Community College, and I would like to thank a couple of my students here tonight for coming. I've heard this word thrown around up here a little bit tonight, trust, and I know my students are smiling, because they know where I'm going with this. We talk about trust in business, and I've heard it just thrown out there, but let me tell you about trust, there's five dimensions of trust, and when you're picking your candidates, because you're picking four, you wanna pick the best four, all these folks up here are great people, but you wanna pick four. You look at five dimensions, one being competence. Do you trust people to competently represent your school district? Competence. Consistency, I know politicians can be inconsistent, but I am a consistent individual, consistency, do you treat all people the same in a similar situation? Integrity, are you believable? Openness to change, if you come to me with an issue, will I listen and will I cope with you? And more importantly, loyalty. All I've known is Johnston County, I've been here my entire life. I love the people in Johnston County. Again, I am from Smithfield, but I married a young lady from Clayton, so you know the rest of that, I had to move to Clayton. And some of the questions I was asked, "Why are you the right candidate"? I've dedicated my life to helping kids. We hear about school safety, I've heard that a couple of times, and I appreciate the shout outs of saying, "Thank you for what you've done, Ronald," I appreciate that. I was a school resource officer for five years, I've had to lock down a school, I've had to take down students who brought weapons in school, I've had to get intruders out of school who had mental illness and had no business on campus. So while it may be a talking point to some, it was a reality to me. I saw the poverty, and I saw the impacts poverty had on children that I cared about. I spent the last 10 years of my life working for a nonprofit driving school, because I cared about the children who were losing their lives in automobiles, automobiles. My wife and I have traveled the state setting up driving programs in rural communities, in densely populated communities, because we care about children. You're gonna hear a lot of people say bad things about each other, and the one thing I like about this forum is they said, "You can't say anything negative about people", and I'm thankful for that, because they would probably have a lot to say about me, but in all seriousness, there are a lot of good people on this stage, and you may see some negative things about me being said, but the one thing I take pride in, the thousands of students that I've been around as an SRO, as a college professor, as a driving instructor, they have nothing but positive things to say about me. The hundreds of school employees I've worked with, nothing but positive things to say about me. And the men and women I served with in my law enforcement capacity, only positive things about me. So I'll take that, I will take that all day, eight days a week, I'm that's right. But I'm gonna answer the questions set forth one minute, alright. We're talking about the future of Johnston County schools, we're gonna talk about instructional alignment, planning with ORED for capacity in our schools, community involvement, and buying. Real quick, we talk about transcendent education, how you rebuild trust, how you get the community back on your side, we talk about generativity, we talk about preparing future generations to take over, and I contend, one of those two young ladies can come up here and give this speech for me right now. Mutuality, what is good for one is good for all. You have to see success as a mutual thing. Intolerance of ineffective humanity, that means you won't stand if something's wrong, you won't stand by and let it happen, and I'll say this, I have risked everything to do the right thing, and why do you wanna talk about unity, being on the same accord? I'm all about that, I work with anybody. But ask yourself, my friends on this stage, are you willing to lose everything to do the right thing? Because I was, I am, and I'll be here, thank you.
First of all, thank you for hanging around. I'm Lynn Andrews, I begin by first telling you first of all that I am a Christian, I am a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, I'm a proud citizen of Johnston County schools. I was raised in Smithfield, I too graduated from Smithfield-Selma High School, Ghost Gardens. I went off to college, I had degrees from Peace College, Appalachian State, East Carolina, North Carolina State University. I worked for Johnston County Schools for 30 years. I served as a teacher, and a coach, and an administrator in our school system. In 2010, I retired as the director of exceptional children program, and in my career, I've worked at the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels. And in my work, I traveled throughout the school system, working with teachers and administrators, and I currently serve as an adjunct professor at Campbell University. I am the right candidate for this position, and I came back to, I entered this race of the school board because I no longer recognize the school district in which I had left in 2010. But I'm the right candidate, because I not only have a great love of the school system, but I feel I'm equipped to serve in this manner. I've worked with every facet of our school system in my work, in transportation, child nutrition, facility services, curriculum instruction, and accountability. A board member must be able to see the big picture, and I can see the big picture. I understand that our school system is huge, and I understand that it has situations and challenges, and I also understand the diversity that our school system is facing and is in, and I also understand the need for equity across that school district. I've had the knowledge and the desire to ask the right questions, and I am certain that we have found ourselves in the situation that we are now in, because the right questions were not asked and informed decisions were not made. I have the experience and finances in the exceptional children's program, I understand federal, state, and local dollars, and I dealt with a budget of over $25 million at that time. I've been trained in, and I understand the legal issues involved in public education, and I clearly understand what teachers need in a classroom to be successful, and I am willing to learn more. I also understand what consensus means, and I know how to establish common ground with people. I fully understand teamwork, and I don't mind having critical conversations with people. I am not a micromanager, and I understand that the school board is a governing agency, it does not run a school system. A superintendent runs the school system, principals run their schools, and teachers run their classrooms. But as a parent and a grandparent, I also understand that community members won't matter to a school board. The future of Johnston County is bright, and don't let yourself even think that it is not. If it were not, I wouldn't be up here. But we're bright, we have a bright future because we have teachers and administrators and staff members who want to help students. I feel certain that the 5,000-plus employees of Johnston County Public Schools understand that being involved in education is a service to your community, and we wanna make sure that every single one of them feel appreciated and valued in their hard work. We need to recruit highly qualified teachers and staff. You know, right now, teachers in North Carolina, you can pick where you want to go, there's so many vacancies. We need to make this school system so appealing that they don't even wanna look anywhere else but Johnston County. It has not been that long ago that we were in so much better shape than we are in right now, but we cannot only return to where we, we once were, we're going better, and it's gonna take strategic planning and hard work. We have to secure a superintendent, we have to balance a budget, we have to, as I said, recruit and retain teachers, we have to take care of people such as teacher assistants and bus drivers and other quality staff members. We must establish strategic plans in these areas, and then we've got to implement the plans with fidelity. We have several challenges, you've heard, you've heard of mention, the budget, of course, we have to work off of a balanced budget, we need to build the fund balance back up for unexpected expenditures, we need to be more efficient with our spending, but we do not need to do this on the backs of teachers and teacher assistants and bus drivers and custodians and other support staff. We need to be at the same, we need to be at the state and the national average for the availability of funds, and some have mentioned that. Johnston County is behind the state average for local funding, and North Carolina is behind the national average for state funding. These funding issues need to be addressed, and if we would be at the averages for those, you'd see a considerable amount more, more money coming in. Growth is also another issue, it continues to be an issue, and with that growth comes a lot of challenges, as you have heard. You know, we ride around Johnston County, and we see all the new subdivisions, we need to be keenly aware of what impact this has on the school system. We have to have a strategic plan for handling that growth in our county. We cannot do this without the help of county commissioners and without the help of state legislature. A system that's growing as we are at 500-plus students a year has to, we have to have a plan for that. We have to address academic achievement and accountability. We need to make sure that we are fully implementing one of our objectives of instructional excellence and alignment. We need to make sure that, that the strategies are in place to look at data, to inform us of the discussion and have discussions of instruction. I personally think that we need negotiables and non-negotiables in our instructional program in our schools and in our curricular expectations. Instruction, we need instruction that addresses the needs of all students, from those who are struggling to those who are academically gifted. We need a curriculum that's being worked on, and when we put these things in place, when you hear the word "low performing school," you're gonna hear it less and less in Johnston County, that's our, that's our solution to low, to low performing schools. We need to listen to our students and our staff and our principals. We also need to make sure that we're implementing something known as multi-tiered support system, which addresses a regular initiative addressed in each school that helps to meet the needs of students who are falling behind. We have to continue to look at the career development opportunities for our students, not only for those who go to college, but for those who wanna go into the workforce. School safety's been talked about tonight, and I just wanna touch on that, and if you talk about school safety, it's defined as schools and school-related activities where students and, students and staff are safe, from violence, bullying, harassment, and substance abuse. And the school system has put into action, as has been said, the board meeting last night addressed these things, they've put into action security and vestibules and emergency plans, they're using safety grants in order to implement other, other options of safety. We have to be proactive, and we have to learn from what's happened in our country. I certainly feel that the SRO officers at our elementary schools would provide an extra measure of security, but I also think there are other things that involve, that need to be involved in training and services in these areas. We need to continue to implement relevant and job-invented professional development to all school staff. We need to utilize the use of federal funds to implement school-wide programs to provide counseling and school-based mental health services. We need to provide professional development also to help identify and refer students who are in need of mental health services. And we need to look at every- And we need to look at evidence-based violence prevention programs that are available. We certainly have to keep up with the growth, we have to keep up with our relationships with our stakeholders, we have to connect with higher education institutions, and we have to look to the community for support and guidance. You know, a member of a school board is a servant leader, and the aim of a servant leader is to work so that others can experience life's greatest purpose, that is my aim. I hope that you will remember me on, as early voting begins tomorrow and on March the 3rd, Lynn Andrews, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, thank you all, candidates, I hope you all will indulge me for a few more moments, because I'd be remiss if I did not thank the many people that made this possible, and if I forget a few of you, I'm sorry, but we've got fellow board members of the Chamber of War here, Colin Kermit, April Stevens, Edwin Jackson, Ruth Anderson, Mr. Marty Mizell, and then in the back, Matt Thompson, who is ambassador also on the Clayton Met Business Legislative Affairs Committee. I encourage all of you to connect with the Chamber, even if you are not a small business owner or feel like you have a stake in the Chamber, because we do many, many great things as our committee, we work with our local elected leaders, we also go to Raleigh and visit with our state elected leaders, and it's all to advocate for you, for the community. And lastly, as a former Johnston County educator, I taught at Clayton High School for a while, I'd like to thank all the candidates for taking the time and being here, and I'd like to thank all of you for taking the time out of your evening to attend, and for the remaining amount of time, I encourage everyone to, if you'd like to meet the candidates or have an individual question for them, feel free to do so, and Dana, is there anything else you'd like to add? Alright, well thank you very much, and I hope you all have a great evening.